So what I'd like to do is go ahead and get started by turning it over first to Dr. Brabran so you can introduce this incredible team.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Smith, our Chief Operating Officer, and Ms. Burden for really working with the spirit of the Board on this follow-on motion to do this staffing dive, to do this analysis, and they have really partnered with an amazing group at ERS. And I think you're going to see an outstanding presentation today that really is going to give us some thoughts about what we need, what we have done, and what we need to look at doing moving forward. But I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smith just for some opening remarks, and then you're going to see an outstanding presentation from the ERS team. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. So, good afternoon. I guess it's still morning. It's great. Good morning, everyone. We are excited to bring back some information about our staffing standards here in Fairfax County Public Schools. As Dr. Brabran said, we have David Rosenberg here today from ERS. Fairfax County Public Schools has been a part of a much larger consortium of a large school districts across the country since 2018 as part of what's called the CFO Network, and ERS has facilitated that work the entire time. And so, we've brought a lot of innovation back to Fairfax County Public Schools because of our participation with this larger group. And so, of course, when the Board asked us to engage in and bring back information around our staffing standards, we thought first of ERS to help us with that work. ERS is a leader in this work across the country and working with school divisions focused primarily on helping school systems be strategic with how they use their resources, people, money, and time. And so, today, we're going to be bringing you some information about our people, and that will help us as we think about that framework and that roadmap for the future as it relates to us being as strategic as possible and being good stewards of our resources here in Fairfax County Public Schools. And so, with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to David. Before I do that, I do have to thank Ms. Burden and her team for their work with ERS. I also have to thank Mr. Sean McDonald and our Business Services Team and Human Resources for their time and efforts with this particular study. So with that, Mr. Rosenberg.
All right, thank you. Is this working? All right, thanks very much. It is really a privilege, better, it's a privilege to be here with you and a rare privilege in the last couple of years to get to do this together. So, thank you for hosting this. I do want to, we are going to review a lot of data and analysis about staffing within Fairfax County. We found it really a privilege and exciting to get to dig into how things work in this school division, and excited to share with you what we found as you think about where this work goes next. Let me make sure we get this right. So, briefly, education resource strategies to pick up on what Mr. Smith was describing. We are a nonprofit organization. We work with school leaders, district leaders, division leaders all over the country. The focus of our work, as Marty said, is on resources, people, time, and money, and how those are used to ensure that every school can be successful for every child. As we engage in this conversation, you're going to see data from districts that are in some ways similar to Fairfax County Public Schools, but no division is exactly the same. And so, we try to bring that data to bear to help understand, make meaning of what we're seeing within a given system. As you can see, we have the privilege to work with leaders across the country on some of these particularly challenging issues. The work here comes off of, just to name it, a Board request specifically focused on staffing. And as we get into this, we'll discuss this a little bit further. As we talk about the volume, the how much question that was teed up, we always go into the questions about, well, how do you organize staff that exists and how are they deployed within schools? And we know that that's the thing that has an impact as much as the how much questions that were teed up. So, we wanted to at least anchor on the starting place for this conversation and name also the prioritization of how resources are used across the system, not just compared to the volume that exists here compared to other systems around the country. If I can move this where I can actually see our screen, is this okay? Okay. So, in all of our work, we start first and foremost with students and the question about student performance academically. And so, we want to name here that we are in a school division where student performance exceeds the states. You're looking at English Language Arts data here, and has for a good period of time. A part of that correlates with the fact that in Fairfax County, we have a school population that is on the lower end compared to many large school divisions in the state in terms of the proportion of students who qualify for free reduced meals, which is, you know, is the standard methodology for understanding poverty, economic poverty. We also know, though, that performance in Fairfax County, as it is true in systems around the country, does not accrue equally to different groups of students. And so, while we have some groups of students that are particularly high performing, we also see significant gaps with particularly black students, Hispanic students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. Again, a common theme that we see, but also raises the question of why we are talking not just about the aggregate volume of resources, but how they're deployed across the system to meet, and how they're used to meet the needs of each student. So, we are tackling three questions here. The vast majority of our time is going to be on the first two. So, we ground all of our work in the work of the division, right? You have a strategic plan, you have a set of students that you know well, you have goals in a local context that is going to be different than every other division around the country. And the three questions we're going to tee up here, first is the how much question. So, how, what is the volume of staff positions in Fairfax County relative to what we see in other large countywide districts around the country? And we use that not because those other districts have figured something out necessarily, so much as it helps us make meaning of what is a large, what is a small number, right? What are some peers or near peers doing? The second question we're going to ask is, well, how are those resources organized within the system, right? Because not every school is going to be treated equally, and not every school's students have the exact same needs. And then, the third question that we'll just land on briefly is, what does this mean going forward? How do we actually organize resources that we do have within each school to ensure every student can be successful? And as we talk about this, you'll hear a couple of words come out of my mouth a lot, and those are strategic and intentional. So, as we bring the data forward, the question we are asking is not, is this right or wrong? Because there's rarely an objective measure for that. The question we're asking is, what we're seeing here is a result of decisions that are strategic and intentional, that reflect the best understanding of what we want to be true and need to be true in Fairfax County. In any large organization, individual decisions that are strategic and intentional in one moment over time can become less so, right? You're steering a very large ship through very complex choppy waters. And so, that's the thing we're coming back to over and over again. Not is it right or wrong so much as it's strategic and intentional decisions that we're seeing, are they likely to help us get to the outcomes that we seek for all students? So, let's tackle question one. How much do we invest in different staff positions in Fairfax County, and how does that compare to districts across the country? And forgive me, I'm using districts, and I know we use divisions here. Pardon me for going back and forth a little bit as we do that. So, I want to start by level-setting on who we're talking about and the methodologies that we're using, because that's going to lay the groundwork for the rest of our conversation. So, there are 28,000 employees in Fairfax County Public Schools. We are not including all of them in our analysis. We are focused specifically on school-based employees. So, we've removed central office workers, we've removed food service workers, transportation workers that serve multiple schools. And within school-based, we recognize that the team has been engaged for a multi-year examination of special education, staffing, and service models. And so, we've excluded staff that predominantly serve students with special needs from the analysis. We've also excluded the small group of staff that are involved in alternative programs, virtual programs, that are sort of less representative of most of what's happening in the district. So, that leaves us with a group of just over 17,000 full-time equivalents that are the scope of this analysis. Another piece on methodology, if we're making comparisons across the country, we need to have a way to get apples to apples about what a comparison is, right? What you call a counselor might be called a manager of student services or behavior specialist in a different place. So, we code all of the data into these common, what we call uses, and within them, there are functions and position types. So, you'll see these uses come up a bunch in the beginning of our conversation. There are six of them. It will surprise nobody in this room to know that in every single school division, instruction is the number-one investment within that, teachers, and almost always operations and maintenance is the number-two investment in terms of sheer size. So, you'll see these come up. And so, if we put those two things together, you can get a sense of just level-setting on where are the FTE in Fairfax County. And as you would expect, the largest group are teachers, more than 60% of the school-based staff that we're looking at are teachers. We also have some pretty significant other groups, looking at custodians, the aggregate group of psychologists, social workers, and nurses, counselors, clerical staff. And so, we'll start to dig into each of these as we get into the analysis. One additional piece here is the districts we're looking at, divisions we're looking at, are all different sizes. And within your division, schools are different sizes. So, we're going to norm everything to an index of per thousand students, right? So, you can see an example here of, in this case, two different divisions that we might say, well, one has more teachers than the other, but actually, if you're leveling it out, you can see how many FTE per thousand students, and that's the metric we're going to use across the board. So, we've laid the groundwork on methodology. I want to give you the short story on the how much questions in comparison to other districts, and then we're going to look at the data specifically. Headline one is sort of a baseline, which is, to what extent are we in Fairfax County matching state standards of quality? The answer is everywhere. That is a minimum bar to hit. It is a bar that is hit in every position that we looked at, and we'll show you that in a second. Secondly, overarching relative to your enrollment levels, we see higher staffing levels in Fairfax County than in the other large countywide divisions that we look at. We'll show you why that is in a sec. And within that, we can see where is the incremental investment. And so, most of that actually goes towards teachers and other instructional support. And there's going to be an interesting dynamic we see in the mix of positions that exist to support teachers, right? The difference between investing more in instructional assistance versus instructional coaches is going to be the big example.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Can I ask a clarifying question about that term? Can you define, like, higher overall staffing levels, like how you define that?
Yeah, it's literally the number of FTE per thousand students.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Marin, he's going to unpack it a little more.
Question that I had when I read it, too. I just, okay.
Yeah, fair question, and we'll look at it across multiple districts shortly.
Okay.
A question that you saw in the initial framing of this was also around social-emotional support for students, and in general, we do see also higher staffing on that next level in Fairfax County compared to other districts. We'll unpack that further and sort of what that specifically looks like. We'll also look briefly at clerical positions and custodial positions. And the headlines there are, particularly at the elementary level, to some extent at high school, compared to the other divisions we look at, Fairfax County staffs more clerical positions per thousand students. And custodial staffing is similar, but the mix of positions is different. And that's kind of an interesting view into how we approach organizing people within Fairfax County Public Schools. Okay. So, I'd like to take each of these one at a time. The first one is the most straightforward one. Baseline question, do staffing levels in Fairfax County meet state standards of quality? The answer is yes, across the board, in some cases by a significant amount. As Ms. Burden and others have pointed out to us, this is the baseline. This is not the aspiration. Then we get to the interesting stuff. So, I've mentioned that we're comparing to other large countywide divisions around the country. We have committed to these divisions to sort of maintain their anonymity in this, but we can tell you a good bit about them to give you some sense of what we're talking about. As you can see, there's five, A through E, that we'll be looking at. All but one of them are a good bit smaller from an enrollment standpoint than Fairfax County, but all of them are at these, absolutely at a scale that we would consider a scaled school district. So, none of the costs that start rising per pupil as you get into being a small school district accrue at this level. All of these are large districts for our purposes, and the difference between 30, 50, 150,000 kids doesn't have an impact on the proportions of allocations you would typically see. You can see a fairly wide range in terms of student need. One thing you'll see here also is even controlling for local cost. Fairfax County spends more per pupil than these districts. And we're going to look at two different data sources in a second to make meaning of the per pupil number, because I want to compare to some of the local districts in a second. And so, it makes sense, then, that you would see higher staffing levels compared to some of these districts, but the ranges you'll see are even higher than you might expect based on these per pupil levels, some more staff in district. And then, the last thing is staffing levels, when you index them, start to change when you get to very small schools, right? The classic example of this is, what is the cost of a principal when you have 300 kids versus 1,000 kids in a school, right? The cost is higher per pupil when it's a smaller school. Fortunately, for this purpose and in general, from an efficiency standpoint, you don't really have any schools that are objectively small in Fairfax County, very few. And we say that there's a point at which school costs per pupil start rising when schools get small. It's kind of not an issue here. It's kind of not an issue in almost all of the districts we're looking at. So, we can sort of remove considerations about school size being a factor here, which is an absolutely simplifying event for us. Now, when we talk about, oh, Fairfax County is higher-funded or better-staffed, more richly-staffed than some of these peer districts, the natural question becomes, well, wait a second, we're here in the Washington, D.C. area, we look around, and we know what's going on. We don't think that's true. And so, I want to name at least that in comparison to the Wavy districts, the dollar-per-pupil numbers here are on the lower end of this particular peer group. There's also quite a range in terms of need of students that has some impact on that. And, right, and Arlington looks very similar from a demographic standpoint and has significantly more per pupil funding. So, I want to name that the comparison set obviously affects the look here, and the comparisons that we are using are districts where we could make the apples-to-apples comparisons across the country based on participation in the cohort, the network that Mr. Smith referred to earlier. So, now we start looking at the data and the analysis. This is the top-level number. You're going to see this format come again and again in our conversation. So, you'll see Fairfax County on the left, you'll see each of the five comparison districts next to it, and we look at school level independently virtually all the time, because school level, staffing models vary. So, we're looking at elementary, middle, and high school. And so, what you can see here is we're also going to be comparing to the median of the peers, right? So, the third of the five, if you were to sort of stack them in order. And so, what you can see here is that at the secondary level, the latter two, Fairfax County is above the median, and at high school, practically the highest staffing level, overall staff in schools per thousand students. In elementary school, it's just below the median, but certainly right in that range. And you can see here, as we'll see, in some of the specific examples, District D has kind of some wonky staffing models that come up for our comparisons. So, what does this mean from a student standpoint? That's all staff. We're going to home in on teachers for a sec. It means student-teacher ratios are lower here than in most other districts. Now, that could mean a lot of different things. That could mean marginally smaller class sizes for everybody. It could mean that we allocate within schools or across schools to create really small-group sizes for certain kids or certain courses or certain times of day, right? It could mean that teachers in some schools maybe could be working at the secondary level a, less of a schedule, right? You could have the same class sizes and the same number of, same student loads in one district versus another, but you might have just a different mix of how teachers use time, right? So, we're not going to get to unpack all of the how, well, exactly what's happening within this, but the condition here of having more generous staffing compared to many of these districts is certainly a really nice starting place and gives you the potential to do a lot when it comes to thinking about time and attention for kids. So, this table is going to be our tracking table for the next bit of conversation. So, what you see here is every one of the positions that we showed you earlier, these add up to about 98% of the positions in the division. So, consider this as comprehensive as we're going to get, there's lots of little stuff outside of it. And you can see the number of positions that we showed you earlier. For each school level, we're showing you a number. Each school level position combination is a number, and that number is what is the difference on a per-thousand-students basis between staffing levels in Fairfax County and the median staffing level in other districts that we're looking at, these peer districts. So, the darker blue, Fairfax County has higher staffing levels compared to peers; the lighter blue, slightly less; the white and the gray, you're below. And you can see there's a lot more blue than white or gray, as you would expect, particularly at the teacher, in teachers, and particularly in secondary schools. I want to call attention to just a few of the rows here. Teachers, instructional support, counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, clerical staff. These are the areas where the numbers are largest. The gaps are more significant. And so, again, worth a little more attention, we think, as we go through, but we're going to go row by row through this. And we'll start with instruction and instructional support. So, we showed you this chart for everybody and the impact on student-teacher ratios. I wanted to show this for teachers now. And so, whereas in all staff, Fairfax County Public Schools was higher-staffed than median and higher-staffed than most districts at the secondary level and right around the median at the elementary level, when you look only at teachers, we're a little higher even than those, right? So, we're slightly above the median, teachers for elementary, and significantly above in high school. So, this means that if you had a school of 1,000 kids in one district versus another, one division versus another, we have more teachers in our 1,000-child school than you would see in another division. So, a big part of what actually helps teachers be successful is who do we surround them with? And there's a really interesting dynamic here in Fairfax County. So, lots of school divisions will have instructional assistants, librarians, academic specialists, those are all the purple and pink that you see. And you can see that in Fairfax County, we're at the elementary school level staffed pretty similarly in those positions, a little lower at the secondary level. The thing that's different here that doesn't exist in every other district is you have school-based instructional coaches, right? And so, when we think about what does it take in order for teachers to be successful, we look at districts where student performance has accelerated, and they have a set of conditions that we call connected professional learning, which requires having instructional expertise in the school, working directly with teachers. So, while we don't have direct visibility into exactly how the model works from school to school in Fairfax County, what we can say is, again, this is a condition that has the potential to allow for a much more strategic type of support for teachers to help them be successful than what we see in many other divisions. Some divisions won't invest as much instructional coaches at all in their schools, some might have them staff centrally, and, you know, where they are in any given moment is less obvious. This is a pretty straightforward model that differentiates you from many of your peers around the country. Moving on to the use we call pupil services and enrichment, and this is where we get into a lot of the positions that were explicitly named in the request for the scope of work. One thing you'll see here is that psychologists, nurses, and social workers are actually, staffing levels are not clear per school, they are aggregate across the district. And so, we're going to, that's the one area where we're not going to look at school level particularly. That is as much a function of what happens in other districts, where it's very hard to unpack for comparison purposes, more so than anything we're seeing here in Fairfax Okay. So, the first area here under pupil services and enrichment, we're looking at counselors and related positions. And this is another one where both the volume and the mix of positions looks a little bit different. We're focused here at the secondary level. In other districts, it is difficult to unpack exactly what's happening at the elementary level for some of these positions, so we've homed in on secondary. And as you can see, just looking at counselors, the dark blue, Fairfax County is, again, more generous staffing levels per thousand students than what we see. Another difference here is the directors of student services. So, in many divisions, you'll have an assistant principal for academics and an assistant principal for administration, or you'll have a dean of students. The director of student services role here is unique, right? It has some elements of what it's like to be an assistant principal, but it is really specifically, the job description is written, to be really focused on counseling students and supporting counselors while also doing things like managing the master schedule in the school. And so, while the application of this might vary a little bit from school to school, the position itself existing, in addition to what we'll see about assistant principals, really is an asset in Fairfax County that doesn't exist in many other districts. So, again, the question we ask about all this, is that strategic and intentional? Is it having the desired outcomes that we want to see? And so, that's a big difference here compared to what we see around the country, is not just the counselor level, but the existence of that director of student services. Psychologists and social workers came up again early on, and so, unpacking what this looks like at a district-wide level, and you can see here that the psychologist staffing in Fairfax County is very similar to what we see around the country, but social workers are staffed at a much higher level. And so, there's a couple ways to look at this, right? One is just the aggregate number. What do we staff? One psychologist and one social worker per thousand students. The second way is the comparison, where psychologists are similar, so social workers are higher. And the third way is, well, what do the associations of psychologists and social workers say we're supposed to do? Now, a fair question, and perhaps not surprising, there's not a single school district in this set that staffs at the level that the trade associations say we should. So, we can look at the, our number on the side, the 25% and the 63% and say, is that good, bad, or in-between? It's really important context to understand that where are the other districts in this, right? And so, again, an asset to have in schools, to have the level of psychologist and social worker staffing that exists in Fairfax County. Similarly, we can look at nurses and nurse assistants, and this is a one where, again, although the resource comes from the county, the nursing level of staffing is higher than what we see in other districts around the country, and then there's the nurse assistants as well. The question, again, that we raise with all of this is, is it strategic and intentional? Is it having the desired outcome that we wish to see, right? But on a sheer numbers basis, asking, do we have enough, or do we have as much as others? The as much as others question is, yeah, for four of the, three of the four districts we're able to compare to, in District D, nurses are provided by a whole third-party entity, so it's not even visible what the resource level is. So, compared to these other four districts, Fairfax County is number two out of five in the staffing level. So, going to keep us moving to look at school administration. Again, we mentioned APs briefly. We're going to talk about clerical staff as well. AP staffing, I mentioned earlier, the director of student services is in addition to the assistant principal, and so, that definitely, it sort of helps the staffing level relative to peers in this area. The thing we want to call out here is elementary schools, and as we'll see in the second section of this conversation, the staffing levels for APs are driven by a set of rules about, related to enrollment, student need, and staffing of other positions that themselves are driven by enrollment and student need. So, those decisions about when an additional AP comes in, is assigned to a school in Fairfax County, that's triggered at a lower enrollment level than we see in other divisions. And that's why there are more APs per thousand students in a school in Fairfax County than we see in these other school divisions. Clerical staff is a little bit of a different story, and so, quite a variation across school levels here. levels here. The number of clerical staff, particularly at the elementary school level in a Fairfax County public school is, is significantly higher than the median of what we see, it's at the top end. So you can see there's basically two groups of, of districts, there's the ones that staff around closer to six per 1,000 and those that staff around four per 1,000. We're in the closer to six per 1,000 at elementary school, slightly above the, or sorry, slightly above the median, but, but at the top end of that narrow range with the one exception at high school, and then lower in middle school. So again, lots of types of things that a clerical team can be doing within a school to help the school run, to help support administrators and other staff in the school. But yeah, the, the data we're looking at here, so where are we relative to what we see around the country? Last piece on this how much section, we just want to look at is, is the operation and maintenance piece, and in particular, the custodial staffing. And again, this is an area where the mix issue is at least as interesting as the how much issue. So sort of like we saw with counselors, where we also have a director of student services that is partially providing the service and partially assigned to manage other adults. The custodial staff in Fairfax County is organized similarly, where building supervisors and engineers are assigned to engage in the work of maintaining facilities and part of their job description is also supporting and managing the, the people, the others who are involved in that work, custodial staff. And so what that does, even where the, the median number is very similar here, in other districts compared to where we are here, that mix being different is, is a notable distinction. Again, the question we ask is, is that a strategic and intentional move? Okay. So this closes up the conversation, or at least the sharing of this first question on how much do we have relative to these other districts that we've looked at? And you, you heard the story sort of repeatedly, in almost all cases, Fairfax County Public Schools is staffed at a higher level per number of students than the other large countywide districts, there are some variations within there, some places where it is higher, some places where mix is a little bit different, but it really a wonderful, relative to what we see in many places around the country, a really nice base to work from in terms of figuring out how do we deploy resources to support all students. This leads into the next question, which is how do we direct resources across the district? You've got an incredibly large, diverse district with schools that have students with very varied needs. So what happens to staff all these people across the district? And this is where I want to start with a summary again. The story here is really also quite straightforward. In Fairfax County, you direct more additional staff to your higher poverty schools compared to your lower poverty schools than other districts do. That is particularly acute at the secondary, at the elementary level, where we actually can make comparisons to other districts. The secondary level, it's difficult to make exact comparisons because the number of secondary schools, so it's getting pretty small, and the, and we can talk more about that. But this is a, a model that puts more staff where there is more economic need. It also turns out that most of those staff are focused in instructional positions. So we'll see in a second, how does it look in other districts, what happens when they add staff into, into higher need schools, and it's not always what you see here. And then we want to name last that all of this is rules-driven, right? So it's not uncommon for us to look at distribution of resources across schools and end up saying, wow, the single biggest driver is what we call ad hoc exceptions, which is another way of saying either principals are navigating the system or it's just not, it's just not obvious how it got this way. That is not true in Fairfax County. Virtually everything that we see here in terms of why higher need schools have more staff is because there are explicit transparent rules that say, this is how we allocate resources. And when we think about at ERS, what is a, a high functioning sort of resource allocation model? Transparency is one of the core tenets. So this, this again is a, is a, is a nice place to be. So I want to talk a little bit about what we mean here and how we look at variation. Not all variation is bad, right? So each one of these bars is a school, and the, the Y-axis here is the number of authorized full-time equivalent employees per 1,000 students. So we see a range, we always see a range. The range of 2X is not uncommon. The question is, why is that? And there are several reasons why this could be. Sometimes you have, you have a need-based allocation. Sometimes you just say, well, we get one per school of, of a certain position, doesn't matter, like a principal, perfect example, one per school. Sometimes there's specialized programming that's sort of under the hood and that shifts who gets what in ways that, that are sometimes intentional and sometimes sort of working at odds with other goals in the district. And sometimes again, there's that principal flexibility point. The absolute number one factor here is the first one, the need-based rules. The other, the next two play some role in variation. So what does this look like in schools? So we have taken all of the schools in Fairfax County and for comparison purposes, divided them into three groups. Schools where fewer than 25% of kids qualify for free reduced meals, schools where 25% to 50% of kids qualify, and schools where more than 50% qualify. And you can see across the bottom, the number of schools in each of those categories, each of those school levels. And so if we take the data we looked at earlier about total number of staff and say, what does that look like per school or per 1,000 students for each group of schools, it varies. And you can see that compared to a relatively low economic need elementary school, we staff about 30 FTE more per 1,000 students in the highest need schools in elementary school and about 20 in the secondary schools. So again, this is a, a need-oriented allocation model, starting from that general position of aggregate, relative generosity of staffing. So what does that mix look like? As I mentioned earlier, it looks a lot like the distribution from the beginning. Much, you continue to add teachers and other instructional support staff in those higher need schools, and that's true at all levels. So at elementary school, there are enough schools in each of the other districts at those poverty levels that we can actually make a comparison. And we could basically say, if, if in Fairfax County, we, we staff 36% more FTE, that was the math earlier, 31 or so divided by the 80, 79 or 83 that we had in the, in the low need schools, that's 1.36. What does it look like for other districts with the same types of groups of schools? And the answer is, some need allocation, but not as significant as we have here. District A does very little to staff their higher need schools. They're also an extremely low-funded district, so they don't have a lot to work with, right? Other districts do staff more, but not as much to our high need schools as we do here in Fairfax County. So again, where are those positions going? Here, three-quarters of the additional positions that we staff are in instruction, vast majority teachers. District A, not true, right? When they add staff to their high need schools, it's almost none of it is teachers. In the other districts, there's a mix, and it can, it can vary quite a bit. But again, in Fairfax County, the staffing rules determine this. The staffing rules say, when poverty is higher, we're going to provide more teachers. When poverty is higher, we're going to provide more of other staff, and some of that is driven directly by the student population, some of it is driven by the teacher population. Once we've decided to staff more teachers, we need to staff more people to support the So turning this back to students, we mentioned earlier, what does student teacher ratio look like in this district in aggregate? Well, now we can look at it by these different groups of schools. And you can see that in a higher need school, based on the poverty metric in Fairfax County, the student teacher ratio is significantly lower than in the, the lower need schools. And again, this raises the question, and we talk about of how much and how well, we call that work strategic school design, right? What are all the ways you can use the resources within a school to support all students? There is a relationship between volume of resources and performance at a district level. There are also schools all across the country that operate with very low staffing levels compared to Fairfax County that are successful, where students are succeeding. There are plenty of schools that operate with more where students are not succeeding. So this question of what actually happens, how do we shape a student experience, turns out to be really central once, to, to the question of how does, what's the connection between staffing and student performance? So I want to emphasize the point about why staffing happens this way. So what you're looking at here, every dot is a school, elementary, middle and high school, our X-axis is, is poverty, our Y-axis is the, the teachers per 1,000 students, and we're looking at the budget formula. And you can see it's a really tight line, right, of what's happening here. Question sometimes comes up as we've looked at this with staff, what's going on with those elementary schools at the top? So in the data set that we have, sort of, there's a cap on when you, when the 19 schools that are community-eligible, from a, from a free reduced lunch standpoint, that we show them at 83% poverty, so they all show up there. Variation within that is driven by a combination of school, it actually does, school size does affect it, right? Because you get these sort of stair-step assignments of staff, once you, you cross the threshold, you get another teacher. A little bit is happening due to the proportion of English language learners and how are we assigning ELL staff in there? But the range you see there is very similar to the range you see up and down, which is, which is fairly tight. So this is what the formula says. Well, we know we go from budget to authorized in our process because there's some changes that can happen, and the, the line stays really tight. If you're statistically minded, the R-square is really high, and that tells us that there's a really tight relationship between school-level poverty and overall staffing of teachers. Now, the one area we do want to flag here that is sort of getting its a little bit of visibility into the potential how well, is the distribution of teachers by their years of experience. And I got to tell you, in districts around the country, we see bars like this that are much farther apart in many cases, but there are some, some pockets within Fairfax County more prominent within middle schools, where the proportion of teachers in a school that we would call early career is much higher than the proportion of teachers who are early career in a lower need school. So what does that mean from a student standpoint, right? It means early career teachers are more likely to, to turn over, to leave the school or leave the district, they're more likely still to be learning how to teach, they're more likely to require more support. And so having early career teachers isn't a good or bad thing, it just has different implications for how we use resources to organize the school, right? And so we've heard a bit, and would love to learn more, we've heard a bit about supports for novice teachers here in Fairfax County that are designed to help them develop and help give them some sort of sheltered experience early on. So again, this is context in which we then have to figure out how we do what we need to do to best serve students. But this is one area where, that is a little bit potentially working against the, the goal of more, more higher, more resources in, in, in our higher poverty schools. So we've said that there's an increase in our higher poverty schools, the question more specifically is where is it? You can see, most of that is coming in teachers, there's a bit of other positions that are included here, and this is again, what is in a higher poverty versus a lower poverty school. The vast majority of these are student-facing positions that can be deployed in ways that enhance the student experience. So the place I'd like to land this part of the conversation is on this third question that I've alluded to a little bit of, so how do we use the resources that we do have in order to serve all students? And I just want to leave you with a couple of points that really are drawn in part on what we observe here and in part on what we've been seeing in networks like the one Mr. Smith referred to earlier and other work we're doing with districts around the country. So to start, just to reiterate, we're operating from a position of strength relative to other districts in the country, from a staffing level and in terms of the mix of staff that we have, we've talked about how much versus how well, right? And so there's all these other questions that happen, need to get answered within that. The piece I want to leave you with is, is the, bringing this back to the moment that we're in right now, and I know there's been lots of planning work done within the district on how we think about this particular moment. The conversations we're having with district leaders across the country in the context of ESER federal funding is not just how are we going to support recovery, which is crucial, and in a world right now where we are constantly putting out fires, is dominant, but the other part of the question is, what do we want to be true in our school district in 2025 when ESER is gone that wasn't true before the pandemic, which is a system redesign question, right? And so we are super excited about the potential that we have when you have the kind of leadership you have here, the resources you have here, the vision that's established in the district plan, to be able to identify, to answer that question and, and use the resources that we do have to make that true, which does require significant trade-offs, even where you, it looks like we have more, because either trading off how we use resources or what kind of resources we have, those changes are often required in order to end up in a place where we do something differently or better than we thought we did before. So I offer that as, as more of a national view than, than any perspective on Fairfax County, because we, we don't have visibility into that level of, of detail, we do have tremendous, we're inspired by everything that we've seen and heard in the district and would be excited to continue the learning process. So with that, I will pause our presentation and pass it back to our chair, or to Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Okay, we do have several board members with questions. First, I have Laura Jane Cohen and then Dr. Anderson.
Thank you so much, really appreciated this comprehensive review and certainly a lot of food for thought for us. A few questions though, why, why did we not consider sped positions in this report?
Yeah, the, the division has been undergoing a longer-term study on special education practices. That included a look, as I understand it, at the, the volume and mix of resources. And so to not muddy the waters between those two studies, we, we said we're going to just create a, a difference and focus on the, the rest of the positions here, which is of course, the vast majority.
My concern, not for you, but for us, is that the, the sped audit was not specifically designed to look at staffing. So I'm a little concerned, I think you all been doing a deep dive in it, would have actually been a really helpful point of information for all of us here that kind of went part and parcel with the audit. Again, you did what you were told, but just as a, a point of information to Dr. Bray Brandon team. The other question you said that we were in line with SOQs, I had a couple of specific position, questions, and this may not be for you to answer, maybe for other staff to, to answer. I do have information, and again, it may be outdated, so please take it in that vein, but the SOQ, the library clerical personnel, my understanding is that it currently says for middle and high school, one full-time for the library, it's 750 students. And I, I know that's not happening here, so I wondered if somebody could address that.
May I clarify something? Laura Jane, I think you're asking about the Quander and other libraries like that, or are you talking about all libraries that we're not staffing at that level?
No, all, all libraries. Just referring back to SOQ, I just want to make sure if we're saying that we're in compliance, full compliance with SOQ, I had a couple of questions about that.
So we don't have that information in front of us today, but we can certainly get that for the board.
I would appreciate that. And then also some concern too, I just want to be careful when we make generalized statements of the one FTE per library program that's in the SOQ. I do see that you excluded Burke School and Cedar Lane and Quander, where we don't have a full-time librarian in that program. So same, Mr. Smith, if you don't mind getting back, I'm, I'm sure you're not prepared today to answer that, but if you could get back to us about that, I wanted to make sure. Another question about the custodian, custodial numbers, in looking at it by per student, I wondered if it was important for comparing apples to apples. Doesn't the number of buildings matter and square footage matter when you're talking about specific function of duties like that?
Yeah, it absolutely does. Yeah, it absolutely does play a role. What we looked at here by, by recognizing that schools, and there's other factors, too, by the way, age of buildings, things that we typically don't even go down the path of. The most, the biggest driver of variation we would typically see is, do you have small or large schools, which typically aligns to enrollment? Obviously, you have some districts where there's been declining enrollment, and you'll have big schools with very few kids. Not true here, not true in the other districts we looked at. So it, we didn't capture everything, but, but by knowing that we're not dealing with small facilities, we know we've captured the, the biggest potential area of variation that we would see.
And I think that's maybe something for a later, deeper dive, maybe with Mr. Plattenberg. Looking at that information per building, I think to, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but to me would be particularly helpful to look at a school that has 4,500 kids versus a school that has 400 kids. I recognize that those 400 schools are not picked up in your analysis, but in being able to figure out, to your point, of strategic placement, might, instead of this comprehensive number, might that be an area where we ought to do a, a deeper look? My other question was about IAs, and this is probably a question from Mr. McDonald. It's just about staffing. I know we're very low, but also how many of these positions sit, oh, is Mr. McDonald here? Oh, sorry. Sorry, nothing like calling you out of the peanut gallery. I, I was just asking, and I know I'm cognizant that I'm right over, so I'll wrap it quick. How many of the IA, saying that we're under on IAs is helpful, but then also just for our edification, how many of our IA positions, rough guess, sit empty right now?
Oh, I would say, and I, I don't, haven't looked at this week's numbers, that we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 60 IA vacancies at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I can get you updated, exact numbers, but that's a, that's a rough guess.
Sure, that's helpful. And I'd love a go-back if we have time. Thank you so much.
Dr. Anderson and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Again, I have about four pages of questions, so I'm going to try to triage a little bit. Just kind of keeping it high level, this is my chart of the schools that I represent, and I will tell you, the FRM goes all the way up to 91%, I'm sorry, 97% for one of our schools, and they're just very high. So that's an area of which I have high concern. So I wanted to get a sense of how are you arriving, and I don't know if that's you per se or staff, at the FRM levels, given that applications are not being completed this year or last year because of the meals that are free-for-all? So I just want to get a good sense that these numbers are actually, are accurate in somewhere, or maybe they're just from two years ago?
They are from two years ago. The, you know, the state and the federal government waived free and reduced reporting requirements, which is typically on October 31st of each year, but because everything is free, they have not completed that reporting. It's not required, at least in the last two years. So the free and reduced numbers are from November, or October 31st of 2019.
Thank you. I also wanted to share, to echo Ms. Cohen's question regarding special education staff being removed. I also think that creates a little bit of an issue, but can you clarify for me which ones are removed? Are we talking about teachers that are at CSS sites, or are we talking CAD-BE teachers, self-contained? Who is removed from this analysis?
Yeah, so the majority of those staff that are removed are teachers who, staff who primarily work in self-contained settings and those who work in specialized sites. And so we can look at the specific breakdown of the several, the several thousand positions that are included.
Thank you. You drove home several times that the way that the budget, that the allocations for staffing and FCPS are determined, it's very transparent and it's highly dependent on high economic need. What are the factors should be or are that we may not know about? Our ELL, I know for the staffing, that part of it is there, but can you kind of give us a sense of what other factors really inform those formulas?
Yeah, it varies from district to district. The easiest, the most transparent ways to understand that in a, in, are in districts that allocate using a student-based budgeting model or weighted student funding model. So they, they basically say, what are our student needs? And then they allocate either dollar, typically dollars, out to schools that the school then buys certain positions. And so poverty is obviously the most, the most critical one. We do see ELL in districts where ELL population varies widely from school to school. Occasionally, we'll see special education, although there are particular funding streams for ELL and special education. We've seen some really interesting work happening around understanding the depth of poverty or the nature of poverty, right? So the difference, so you, in Memphis, for example, they now look not just at poverty when they allocate resources, but at student mobility, because that's measured. And so you, so to be able to say, like, what is the difference between the student who has the same home to go to every night and the student who doesn't, right? And so they have a bump up for that. So there's several examples of, of pieces like that. You'll also see some districts say, we really want to double down on certain grade levels and provide more staff there. That only works, of course, if you choose a couple, not a little bit of everything.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Burden or Mr. Smith, this is a question for you most likely. Where can we see those formulas based on these different employee positions? Are those available for review?
The, do you mean the staffing standards, the FCPS staffing standards? They appear in the appendix of each budget document, and it includes the staffing standards for FCPS, and it also includes the state SOQ as well for each staffing standard. I think there's about 130 of them, so go crazy.
Okay. Yay, me, thank you. All right, I'm trying to get to some of my questions here. I want to speak more specifically to one area, because again, you're speaking about how much of the staffing is based on the needs of the schools. One of their three positions that I'm not sure that I have clarity in terms of have they been determined, ARTs, S-bits, and T-specs. Who can speak to how the schools' need come into play for these three positions? How ARTs resource based on economic need, or are they?
I see Ms. Kliminko back there. Could you speak to that allocation for ART? Thank you.
So as you know, the, the allocation for ARTs was about a .5 for all schools. And then as the board put more and more money forth, we started first with Title I schools, made sure they had full-time ARTs. And then as we have grown them, we've continued to go across regions in an equitable way.
If you could speak a little bit in terms of when the .5 ARTs were first allocated, what was the rationale? What, why did we decide to include that as a position in our schools? What problem were we trying to address?
That was many, many years ago.
I realize what I'm asking.
I think it's, I think it was a number of things. It's similar to other instructional leadership positions that we have in our schools, right? So ensuring that teachers had the training and support to be able to differentiate the curriculum for, for students across the four levels, not just, you know, Level 4. Ensuring fidelity of implementation of the service model that we have. And then working with, you know, parents around the identification process and the screening process. So again, I mean, similar to a lot of the instructional leadership positions that I think that ERS has pointed out, that we have built into our infrastructure to make sure that our quality of instruction is better and that the students are receiving a better instructional experience.
Dr. Anderson, if I could just add, this board and the prior board have really done work around this. And to me, this report today talked about that we're not just organized as a school system and the distribution of funds, that we're organized in an equitable distribution of funds to schools, and we have put more resources in higher-need schools, which include many of your own. The prior board, I want to say, did make the first budget amendment. I think Ms. Kofax, Darrenath Kofax, put it in to do Title I schools. And then we had the outside consultant come in, who doubled down on the work we were doing and said we needed to begin to go to that full ART. And we are, I think, Dr. Presidio, in this budget in the second or the third year of that three-year plan to get an ART in our elementary schools.
In the second year.
Second year.
23 budget, there's 20 additional for elementary and five additional for
Thank you.
Middle school for 40 elementary and 10.
So really, what I, I just want to reiterate, this is us working with the board from the prior board to this board to continuing to accelerate some of the work around these instructional coaching positions that you see the, the study really highlight, that makes us unique as a school system, and I think has helped us with board goals and our equity of access goals that we've had.
And I, I have a lot that I want to say there, but I'm mindful of my time, and I really want to get that, this next question out. So I will circle back if I have a, a second turn. But I want to go to the space, I can't remember the page, where you talked about the teacher experience and how research shows that students who have younger teachers are making less growth. And for the most part, that the inexperienced teachers are clustered in the areas where we have the highest levels of need, which is also not probably the best thing to have. What recommendations do you have or have you seen in other divisions around the country where some safeguards are being put into place or additional provisions so that the schools with the greatest, greatest levels of need do not have this highest influx of new teachers and of course turnover? Because that, I think, we really need to hone in on.
Dr. Anderson.
Yeah.
I think we've got your question.
What's that?
They're ready to answer your question, and your time's up. I'm sorry, we'll put you on a go-back.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the question. So I will answer it with, without respect to what is, may already be happening here in Fairfax County, because we don't have visibility into the policies and the practices in schools that may already, may already include some of the things I'm going to describe. So the way to think about this is you've got, sort of, you can reallocate, create incentives about who is in which schools, or you, and/or you can change the way in which you support teachers within the schools. So we do see districts around the country try to create incentives to have teachers that are higher-rated or considered more effective or even just more experienced move into schools where need is more significant, if there's a significant portion of early-career teachers. Lots of factors come into that. How do we know who we want to incent to do that? How do we maintain equity in the system for teachers in terms of who gets the move money versus not? In a place that is geographically large, like, what's the difference you're asking for of teachers? So like, there's, there's a set of policies around incentives for teachers to teach in higher-need schools. There's a second set of policies that are about how do you organize the, the job of the schoolteacher and the support around them? We call that work Shelter and Develop. So the basic premise is, when I started my job, my job in year one did not look like my job in year five, even if I was with the same employer, right? I had an easier workload and I got more support, more coaching. And so Shelter and Develop basically says, how do we take incoming teachers, whether they're pre-certification or post-certification, to become teachers of record? How do we provide, how do we shift workload and provide more support to them? There's lots of models for that. I suspect some of that is already happening here in Fairfax County, and those are some of the things that we would look at in thinking about what, what actually starts to work, to change the dynamic. I would say also, we don't have the data here on attrition, turnover, to know how big a deal it is relative to some places, to see early-career turnover. And the, especially in high school, and just looking at the data, the, the ratios of the proportions of early-career teachers in high and low-need schools, in high schools there's almost none, and in elementary schools, right? So I don't want to say it's okay. I want to recognize that we've seen situations that are far more extreme than what we see, what we see here.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser.
I'm going to start with a couple of macro-level questions. Ms. Burden, how much did we pay for this report today?
I need to check something to find the exact amount.
Okay. And for the $300,000, we got this PowerPoint today? Is there anything, any other work product they produced?
I believe that they're preparing a summary report that's, you know, two or three pages that goes along with the PowerPoint, a narrative.
So I have a number of questions, but I, I think I just need to tell my colleagues right now, I, I couldn't be more disappointed in what we're looking at here. A $300,000 investment, in, in all my time, we typically would get at least a report, a detailed report, not PowerPoint slides with data on them, because that's not analysis. I can read a data chart, I, I actually can. I appreciate your time here today. You spoke a lot off of the slides. If I had a report, I wouldn't either sitting here scrambling, trying to write notes. The public who's going to want to read this, anyone else who's a key stakeholder, unless they're going to have to now sit through the presentation in order to take your words to the PowerPoint slides. I mean, Dr. Bray-Bran, I have to say, this is definitely not what I expected for a $300,000 investment for something that's so important. And I, I don't understand why Prince William, why didn't you guys use them as part of your WABE comparators? Because you've got Alexandria, you've got Falls Church, and you've got Manassas, which are tiny little districts of WABE. Is there reason Prince William's not on your chart?
Prince William did not participate in the current WABE guide because of lack of resources to be able to put the data together.
Okay, so that's why you don't have Prince William in there? Because my concern is, again, I've said this over and over again, these tiny little school districts, economies of scale alone, anyone doing analysis would know that especially the single one high school districts aren't really relevant. The comparator schools, how did you pick the five of them when only one is over 150,000 students? The other four are ranging from 30,000 to 50,000, or 50 to 70,000, which I don't consider a large district when we're talking about comparators. So how did you pick these five?
Yep. So there are close to a dozen districts or maybe more in the large county-wide consortium, and the offer was made to all of them to open their books, allow us to do analysis that we would then share on an anonymized basis with you and with them. Five districts were able to participate, which I think, given the circumstances of this year, was, was really terrific to be able to get. I think I would just say, based in our work in close to 100 districts over the last 17 years, when you look at the proportion of resources allocated from one position to another or one used to another, we do not see any variations that are driven by size once you get up to over 30,000 students and even less than that. So we absolutely, we try to be really careful about how we choose comparison districts, recognizing that there's no perfect set. But I would, I would assert that we've been fairly diligent in trying to choose comparison points that are relevant, as relevant as possible to Fairfax County, given the needs of the analysis.
Well, I, when I, I look at the analysis, even something, as you were talking about where we are with nurses and nursing assistants, people who are knowledgeable in that field and that space know that there's entirely different delivery model of best practice of nurses versus the nurse assistants. And to have an analysis that simply says, in looking at five other districts, we're going to give you guys a, a blue ribbon of you're looking good, is, again, worrisome to me about the analysis that we've received here. Because other than, I think, the District E, where they do show a higher usage of nurses, which is a best practice, and again, we're talking about, you know, how many school districts across the nation, you compared us against five others, and then we're supposed to feel good about it? I mean, I, I know I've run out of time. All I can say to my colleagues, you guys, if you're comfortable going out to the public and telling them we spent $300,000 and this was all we got from the consultants, I, I will tell you, I, I can't defend it. I think that, you know, if this is how you understood the contract, then I think we have a very serious problem on our hands on how, as a division, we enter into a $300,000 contract and this is what it yielded. I don't think this is appropriate use in what we got.
If I could make one comment, I would just say this, and I've got four months to go as superintendent. I've worked with this board my entire five years to try to be transparent and answer basic board questions. We have three. If I could make one comment, I would just say this, and I've got four months to go as superintendent. I've worked with this board my entire five years to try to be transparent and answer basic board questions. We have $3 billion of a budget. And for a couple hundred thousand dollars, is the money being spent with equity in mind? You got a definitive answer today that that's the case, based in a consortium of districts at scale, and that's the analysis. If there's additional documentation, we can certainly try to work with a consultant to see that goes beyond the PowerPoint to have a narrative. And I see Dave nodding his head. But this was something the board wanted because community members are wanting to know, how does our funding stack up and are we equitable in the funding? And I think we did answer that today in the midst of the pandemic, in the midst of some districts that don't want that transparency. We are trying to partner across the country and partner with you to show the transparency in the work that we're doing. And obviously, I respect different board members will have different interpretations of the work. But I believe the work that we did today presents that the district has been funding our district well to meet kids by name and by need and with an equity lens. And there's still more work to do and to reimagine out of this pandemic. But I appreciate your feedback.
I just want to make sure you didn't mischaracterize me because I did not say that $300,000 isn't worth spending on equity and staffing. I brought into question
Ms. McLaughlin.
The work product. That was it.
Ms. McLaughlin, we're going to go on to the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. And I appreciate your hard work and I appreciate the detail here in the comparisons. And I wanted to actually start with something that Dr. Brabran mentioned and Ms. Cohen mentioned in terms of equity and funding positions. And I will echo what Ms. Cohen said. I am, I understand there's a special education review going on, but that review, while it tangentially touches on recruiting staffing, it doesn't look at staffing in comparison necessarily, and it could. So I wanted to ask you for a clarifying question. You, I think you said, and you listed the schools you excluded from this. And you said you excluded self-contained settings. Is that self-contained settings within traditional schools as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So how did you factor in special education setting that's used to support students within the general education classroom?
Yeah. So this is, so this is embedded in our methodology of naming when is like, based on the job description and the type of role, when do we consider something to be serving students in a, in a self-contained setting or outside of the main, the main classroom, the gened classroom or not? So we went position by position
Okay.
and looked at those and came up with the close to 6,000 FTE that are in those roles. There are absolutely going to be positions of instructional assistants, teachers potentially in many districts, we see this, teachers who are dual certified, who are working in an inclusion setting, like any staff that are involved in serving general education students in any way would be included.
So you could have a school that has a higher FRM perhaps, but a lower number of special education students. And how does that, how does that staffing factor into your, you know, staffing per school? Like, I'm trying to drill down into, if you have a school that has 25% free and reduced price meal, but a higher special ed population in inclusive settings, how does that staffing impact your staffing numbers here? Or does it not?
So how does that staffing?
I guess I'm trying to dig into like, we're looking at equity, but I feel like we're looking at equity through one lens. And that's free and reduced price meal. And that's very important, don't get me wrong. But leaving out special education staffing altogether, especially at the secondary level, where I don't believe we do staff necessarily for inclusive settings, I think makes it really difficult to take this report and know, as Dr. Brabran said, that we have equitable funding for staffing. So I'm trying to dig into a little bit more about, about that piece of it.
Yeah, Ms. Seismarheiser, I went and I just, Ms. Omeche and I were side barring. And again, it's continuous improvement in the partnership. And today, part of the feedback may be some additional work that we want to do around special ed. The motion, the follow-on did not specifically mention special education. In fact, we took the specific categories and then that's what we used to inform the outside consultants' work. I think the other thing is, while we didn't explicitly in the special education audit have staffing, I don't know that we explicitly excluded it. And we didn't want to be in a place where we were paying two consultants to come up with two different things. But there's nothing stopping us from continuing to work with ERS and to look at some of these other categories if that's where the board goes based on this feedback.
I do hear what you're saying.
Dr. Brabran.
Ms. Darno-Camp.
But I do have a clarification. The special education review, there was actually a very specific, how efficiently and consistently does FCPS allocate staffing to meet the needs of its population of students with disability? It was particular, it was asked, it will be looked at. So that was in that.
Oh, that's from the earlier work session with the special education audit earlier this fall as a follow-on that the board said needed to address it?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Which is, I think, another reason we didn't double dip in the consultant work for this report.
So we're going to go back to Ms. Seismarheiser so she can continue her questions.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And I think, you know, what I'm trying to get at is when we're looking at best practices in staffing and how we compare to other districts as opposed to how we allocate staffing. I want to make sure that that's, that's the piece that I'm looking at. My understanding, the special education review is how do we allocate staffing? How efficiently do we use our staffing? Not necessarily how do we compare to best practices. So that may be something to talk to Ms. Cohen about to make sure that's included as well, or that's understood. And I just, I guess I, Dr. Brabran, I understand the doubling. I just wanted to make sure that we're not approaching this work with a siloed mindset, that special education is siloed here and every other review is looked at without, looking at least how some of the special education within general education settings, our 504 students, all of those pieces are included when we're looking at reviews that aren't necessarily just special education focused. That's, I guess, the big picture that I'm trying to get at. It may not change what you did, but it does concern me, the mindset that that said to me. Because it is a long-term problem to be siloed. I wanted, let me just change a little bit. You talk about a long-term vision redesign, and I really appreciated the way you framed that because I think there is space here for that. And I guess I'd turn to you and say, yeah, I saw something about how do we maximize instructional practices for all students? I'd love to hear more about your thoughts on that.
Yeah. So when we think about, and we look at schools and systems that are generally having greater success, there's a lot of factors with students, there's a lot of factors that go into that. When it comes to use of resources, we see several things come up over and over again. So we look at, are we using rigorous, high-quality curriculum across the board? Are we engaging in meaningful professional learning that is job embedded that supports teachers? Are we targeting resources to ensure that students with the greatest, the most unfinished learning have more small group instruction, more time in learning, more time with the best educators, right? Our social emotional supports embedded with academics, not just separate. You mentioned inclusion being a critical factor in the success of students with disabilities and students without disabilities. So I think those are some of the things that we start to look at. I can share with you or refer you to our work, what we call strategic school design. So sort of captured quickly in a, in a paper called Designing Schools That Work, and some of the work we've done around COVID recovery in particular, aligned to what we call these five power strategies, many of which I just described, that fit in within that. There's more underneath it, but those are some of the practices that we see.
We've got you. Want to go back?
All right. I just want to remind my colleagues, we will have a next step document for this work session. So Ms. Medea, have you already sent the link to people? Okay. So, you know, a number of things have already come up, I think, that belong in that document. Okay, next we have Ms. Marin, followed by Ms. Amash.
Yes, thank you. I really enjoyed reading this and I was eager to hear more today. And the question I'd asked earlier might have just been about the wording of staffing at higher levels versus more. So that was what my initial confusion was. But so I think that this report and this whole exercise is really a nice way for us to identify what is a board we want to be working on and directing work to. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't see this as the be all, end all of all the information or even as a standalone for decision-making. It's, you know, things that have come up, like the gaps between staffing for special education and general education. I've often wondered why, what's the advantage to having two different assistant superintendents offices and bifurcating that instruction when I know, just thinking about my own children, it's all mixed together. And so, you know, I think this has been a question we're very passionate about because of our experience and the audit and all these things. I also, you know, it brings to mind, you know, what kind of project management do we want to support? You know, I know we have our COO here with, you know, a budget lens and an HR lens, but also like our ORC department for research, you know, where can they now take on some of this work and help us in identifying the questions and the kinds of studies and reports that we want to have these kinds of, you know, richer conversations? So that said about like the format, you know, I just want to underscore how this analysis makes so clear why reducing poverty helps everyone. You know, more students will get more teachers, I think, you know, I'm thinking back to my days in the Title I office at the U.S. Department of Education, it was such a misunderstanding that if you are in a Title I school, you know, you don't get a quality of instruction. You actually get more staff per pupil, more staff per pupils. But with the caveat that we might not have the most qualified and experienced teachers. But I think that having this concentrated poverty in Fairfax is an embarrassment. I think, you know, just as I said earlier, there are many things outside of FCPS that we can't control. The housing patterns, the living wage employment, the public transportation, all the policies and implementation of those policies that have borne out. But our school board, as we've discussed, can do something about that, and that is looking at the boundaries. And we've been busy with some other life-threatening issues the last few years, but this has been something that has been discussed for many years. And it is something that we are going to have to reckon with if we really want to address poverty. And I'm very pleased to see the data by poverty and not ethnicity and race. I think that is a gross misunderstanding about, about achievement. So I appreciated the poverty being shown that way. The two things I want to say lastly is, I think it's fascinating when we look at the student and teacher ratios because, you know, again, my children personally have never had a class smaller than 25 students in their entire elementary school career here in FCPS. Right now, my kids have 28 kids in their classes in third and sixth grade. So there's something more to look at in the data here and how that breaks down. And class size, my heart hurt when it was less than 1% that we have small schools. There are small schools programs, we can get smaller schools. So all that plus the ESER conversation is interesting, part of that big picture planning. So I share that with my colleagues mostly and with our researcher.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Amash?
Thank you. Amen to a lot of that. So I really, I really appreciate it, especially elevating some of the tougher issues that we keep kicking the can. So maybe we can bring that boundary conversation back. Thank you to our consultant for thorough work. I really did appreciate this and especially have been waiting two years after a follow-on that was a follow-on to a follow-on that I brought. And I think Ms. McLaughlin seconded to the budget in our first budget cycle together as a board. So, Mr. Rosenberg, I really do appreciate the thorough work. To that, building off of some of the conversation that's happened, I did have a question. When it comes to that FRM spending, I don't want us to misunderstand our county contribution compared to the federal dollars that we get Title I wise. So I don't know if it's a question to you or Ms. Burden, but can someone just be very explicit? It's, you know, supplement, not supply, right? Sorry to be a nerd on this. I'm doing my thesis on this topic. But can someone just speak to that, please? Is that our county contribution positions or is that the federal dollars that are funding that?
Yeah, I could just say that the analysis is looking at uses of funds agnostic of sources. So all sources that come in are included.
Okay. So we don't know the breakdown? Like percentage-wise?
Not one of them.
Okay. The reason I point that out is I think as a county, we still have to be thoughtful about whether we're intentional around funding lower income kids or schools that have those high needs because the federal dollars severely underestimate what the potential of what could be done and are not even meant to stand alone. And many divisions end up just relying on the federal dollars. So that's why I want to just be mindful of that as a, as a board. Which brings me to the other point. We compared to SOQs, we compared to other divisions. I think the intention around this when it came forward was to look at best practices, kind of outside of the state standard. We know the state standard severely underestimates the need, right? Bare minimum, like you won't be shut down as a school by maintaining that, right? And then in terms of neighboring divisions, we still might observe that there is a severe funding issue or just a common problem of not being able to satisfy certain needs or certain ratios. Can you comment on that a little bit? And I'm wondering if maybe even as a next step or something, we can take a look at some of that. Because what you'll, what I've found, you know, the recommendations from, let's say, Counseling Association or various associations across the country have much lower ratios than what we see being common practice, right? So that's the quality that maybe we want to achieve towards higher, not just be happy with where we are. But if you could speak to that, please?
Yeah, happy to. And I really appreciate the thought and excited to learn more about your thesis, hopefully. So there's a reason we talk a bunch about sort of how much and how well in this. A fact that is, just looking across the country in the last 40 years, we've increased investment in K-12 education by about 35%. More than half of that money has gone to increasing the number of positions in schools. And the vast majority of the time, what happens is that we add positions and we sort of layer things on. And we don't, one of, one of your colleagues described earlier, it's like, it's all the same. It's all what happens in the school is all, you know, integrated ideally. And so I share that anecdote simply to say that, like, there is research that tells us more resources can get us, correlates with better outcomes. And there is so much variation in what happens within that and how we use the resources that we do have within any given school and how that varies across the system and how that can even vary within a school and the experience of students, that I do think that there's always fascinating questions to take up in looking more closely at exactly how, how things work with, within the district. I would come back to something you said earlier about best practice. And Ms. Smith and I were, were side barring over here earlier. He reminded me of this really important point, which is that from a, from a how much standpoint, there isn't a clear best practice on saying, oh, schools with $27,000 per pupil or 15,000 or 8,000 is the right thing and here's the exact right mix. What we can look at are the spots where in the country we've seen greater success. And it does come back to that mix of how much and how well. So the, the power of comparisons here is not to say, aha, District C is the best. It is to say, how can we make meaning of what we have relative to what we see around the country, recognizing that everybody's struggling to, to achieve the same kind of goals.
Yeah. I think that's part of the strategic school design piece you were talking about earlier. Yeah. I guess maybe to illustrate an example, you know, we seem to be doing really well on the psychologist front, right? You shared with us that we're comparable and then social workers were doing even better. But then if you look at reality on the ground and you see that each school is assigned one or a half or whatever, right, of these services, you recognize that for hundreds of kids, that's not satisfying a need, right? And that's where I want to see if we can explore best practices, which may not even be necessarily defined out there. But at least to be honest with ourselves in saying, we've met the state requirement, but, you know, are we doing the best it can be for students?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a really crucial point. And again, I think, you know, you can take any position in any school and see that work happening really, really well. And you can see that work happening not as well. And so without, I want to be thoughtful and maybe choose words differently about saying, are we better or, or worse than are we doing well or not? The staffing levels here in those positions are as high or in some cases higher than the peer comparisons we're able to make, which gives us a base to work from.
It's my time, but I'll go before I go back. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Nakofax?
Thank you. And I appreciate you bringing this forward. I believe it highlights what we hoped and believed to be true, that our students continue to perform above our state averages and we do have an equity focus in a lot that we do. It's been something that the needs-based staffing is what we call it here. And that has been something that was put in by earlier boards to intentionally allocate resources to schools with high poverty. So I will ask though, I would appreciate a written executive summary. Will you be able to provide that?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And would you be able to provide also a written report, kind of just high, follow, in addition or as part of the executive summary, as part of what you, your talking points for the slides? Because I think that will be helpful.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely. Wonderful. I appreciate that. And so I will, I guess I'll put that on the next step that Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington just, I trust that you will be able to get that. I think, I guess I will ask you this in your research or in your analysis. I also have a high percentage of poverty schools in my area. And I was, and we've often struggled with how struggled with how best to, it would be nice if we could recruit more experienced teachers and have them work in tandem. Have you seen models like that in your research, or do you have any analysis you can give to us?
Yeah, there's, there's some examples out there where that incentives can draw folks into higher-need schools. I think evidence would tell us that in, depending on the sort of the nature of the community and the geography of the community and the experience of those teachers, you can be, you can be swimming upstream a little bit in terms of what are all the reasons why teachers move from School A to School B or Community A to Community B, without assessing whether that's good, bad, or in-between. So the models that we've seen where there's significant dollars, but also thinking about the structure of the job for teachers matters a lot. So, you know, am I going to get the teacher to move from School A to School B with $5,000 or $10,000? Research would say sometimes. Thinking about what is the full scope of what the job is, I think most teachers would tell you that money would be nice, but time is even better. And so thinking about that and thinking about also what are the experiences of the early career teachers and how we support them. In our research on different supports for early career teachers, what we found is the number-one outcome from a teacher standpoint that we can aim for to have the biggest impact on students is retaining teachers for four years instead of two. That the change in teacher effectiveness over that time matters a ton. So it's sort of related to your question of should we get more instructional expertise into our higher-need schools? Yes. Should we try to change the mix of teachers? Yes. And how do we create a situation where we actually reduce turnover by providing with those people and others the right types of supports that allow that, that dynamic to change?
And I appreciate that, because we've seen, you know, I, in one area of my district, we have several Title I schools, and some perform with great fidelity and are great, highly successful, and others do not, and there's a churn, and it's difficult to even pinpoint as to why that happens. Of course, leadership is something extremely important. So I guess my other question then here, just drawing upon your expertise, not exactly on the data points you're talking about, you talked about principal flexibility. I, I guess I would want your thoughts on the trading out of positions, you feel, because we have had a lot of back and forth on this through the years, is should we have tighter guardrails on that? So what's your experience been there?
Yeah, I think the most important thing that we see, and I, I am here representing not only a team of several folks who are listening in, but also the 70 of us and the close to 20 years of work that we've had the privilege to do, is having consistency in your theory of action, right? So the way things get messy is when a school district leadership says, you have to do things a certain way, and then the principals who know who to talk to figure out how to do something different. Or vice versa, we say, you have all kinds of flexibility, and then it turns out that in reality, it's impossible to make a change, because you get just enough resources to do the minimum things you need to do, and that's it. So I would say that's the first, the first piece. In districts where, depending on where you define those guardrails, what's critical is one, being clear about where they are, right, transparency. And then I would say support, right? So if you ask the average principal, because not every principal's a superhero, what they want to do to change the resource use in their schools, like, if I just surveyed 100 principals, I'm pretty sure more than 90 of them would say, well, there's one person I'd love to not be here if I could have, get them to go, and there's something I want to do with the, with our out-of-pocket expenses or supplies money or trips money or something. And none of that changes at the level that you're describing. And so the nature of school support from system to school and the support the principals have, which cuts across finance and HR and academics in helping work within whatever guardrails exist, also matters a ton.
Thank.
And I would add, Ms. Darnat-Kofax, from my days as a principal, when, when I did make those trades within my building, a majority of those trades were to support instruction. And so as we look at how principals are using their resources and making those trades, our principals are siding on the side of supporting students and instruction more often than not.
And if I could just add that, a few years ago, as a result, I believe it was of an audit, we were able to automize, automatize that process so that clearly, when a principal wants to make a trade, it's reviewed by the regions as well as the departments. And it has to be approved.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ivy. That, that was part of what I was remembering, as I said, there were sometimes guardrails that needed to be put on, and, and they have been, so I think that's, that's important. And I think, to make my final point in this, I think what you were saying in all of your answers to my questions is what we do has to be strategic and intentional. And I think we as a system, when we talk about system redesign, what do we want in place? What are we going to do when ESER is gone? How are we going to use that as a foundation building block? That's all going to be very important. I feel like your analysis said we're kind of in a good point, but we need to, you know, move forward a little bit. But I think it's extremely important to my colleagues, as we move forward, we have to, at the very least, dust off the strategic plan if we want to start again, that's fine, but we have to look at that with intentionality, we have to look at that because it was done well. It was done with integrity, it was done systematically and through, through lots of analysis. So I think as we move forward and we find, as we talk about where we want to go from this report, we need to really think about that. So thank you.
Do you need to go back? Ms. Bukarski?
Okay, thank you. One question, the middle schools that you benchmark, here in FCPS, our middle schools, most, let me say, the majority of our middle schools are seventh and eighth grade. What were the other divisions, sixth through eight, or was that comparable?
More often sixth through eight. We could go back and, and look at the specific numbers in the mix.
Okay. And I wonder if that has any impact on, you know, the data?
It would, it's a great question. Where schools are subscale, which for a secondary school, we consider 500 students or lower subscale, because in virtually every district, that's where the cost curve starts rising. Where schools are subscale, you start dealing with issues of, well, how many grades particularly? It's actually more relevant in elementary, because you start being departmentalized in, in secondary school. So it shouldn't be too much of a factor at this point, because the, the school enrollment levels are high enough that you've got, you've got enough educators across grades and subjects, you're not stretching people as you would in a much smaller school.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my, the last piece of what I want to say, I know a lot of questions have been asked, is kind of, I guess this data in context piece, right? I mean, this is good, it's great to see, but, you know, and it's, it's kind of the hard data comparing bodies to bodies. But then what's all the other stuff? Like what, you know, what is actually happening in our schools? What are the expectations that we put on our individual teachers? What are the curriculum expectations, the community expectations? How do we factor in planning time? And I guess that's kind of where I'm thinking about when I look at this and, and, you know, want to find a way to make it meaningful to the decisions we're making. So I just put that out there, I guess as something that I think we need to think about. And if you have any comments to that, because I guess the next piece is, for us is like, and so what, right? And so what? Where's that analysis? Where's this going to help us go in terms of our decision-making to close some of these gaps? We see we do have great staffing, according to this, in some of these high-need schools. Well, then what? What do we need to be looking at? What's different? What are, you know, where are the areas where we can do, do better to see better outcomes? So I don't know if you have any comments to that for us to think about going forward?
I think you're asking, like, very logical, appropriate questions about the how well piece of this, right? So we've established the how much, and again, choosing my words carefully, in most positions, more staff than we see in the five comparison districts we're able to look at. As you alluded to earlier, and you're getting to this, there's lots of ways that can play out that are, that are different. Can I have, you know, if I have a teacher teaching five out of seven periods in, in an example, high school, what are, A, what's, which classes, which kids, with what support, what's going on in the other two period? Like, there's lots of different dimensions that, that are at play there that I do think play a role. I think, as was alluded to earlier, you're in a system where performance, while also related to proportion of kids qualifying for free reduced lunch, as we see across the country, is fairly strong relative to other peer districts in many ways, and lots of variation across the system. And so this is also a big enough system where I suspect there's some really incredible bright spots to look at and say, hey, is that something that we, we want to figure out what's working and being able to bring it to other schools? I'm sure there's much of that to think about.
Is my time up? Oh, no. Okay.
And if I may, Ms. Bukarski, so you've just asked the $3.2 billion question. And so when I think about the work that we, that we all engage in, and I was just thinking today that I've been, I've been in this building now for 15 years, it seems incredible. And during that time, we've all been engaged in this notion of, of district redesign. As boards come in, as boards engage with the community, as we engage with our principals, we make incremental changes to our system. And so as we think about how we've used ESER, as we think about what's on the horizon for new strategic plan, as we think about those priorities, these data points are yet one more set of data that we can use as we all engage in that process of what's on the horizon for the school system. So I don't know if there's necessarily an answer, but, and I don't think that you were looking for one, but I do think that these are important data points that can, that validate some of the work that we've been doing and can help us as we start to put the other pieces and as we bring other data to you around ESER, around achievement gaps, it will help fill in some of those puzzle gaps that we may have had in the past.
Yeah, no, of course, there's no answer, but I just think it's important that when we're having this conversation, that we just center ourselves and ground ourselves that, you know, context matters and the limitations of just this piece of a bigger puzzle. The last thing, and I may have stepped out, so I apologize. Can you talk a little bit more about the custodian difference that you saw there? And I don't know if our staff jumped in to clarify those positions.
So generally speaking, the total staffing of custodians at each school level is fairly comparable to what we see in peer districts. The difference here is you have the building supervisor and engineer positions that are explicitly designed to, to be both providing direct services, custodial services, and supporting the management of that team. And that mix is, is a different mix than we typically see, right? Another district, the, the average of the other districts has six custodians per thousand students, or six and a half custodians per thousand students. In this district, we'd see five plus a building engineer.
The supervisor still is engaged in, in, in the work of our, of our custodian duties. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just the $3.2 billion answer, because I want to, I want to suggest there is, there is an answer that I want to be sure that people get out of today. Wavy has us on this guide, Prince William didn't do their data. We're next to last. We're not an overfunded system locally, and he did the comparison nationally to systems at scale. We're a little over. We're not orders of magnitude over, but we're a little over. The second big question, is the money we have being used with an equity lens and focus? Overwhelmingly, this report tells you the allocation is an equitable one. That's a powerful thing to answer. Not us saying it, the board or the superintendent says it, an outsider says the equitable distribution. I think the part maybe for what's next, got to something you said, Ms. Seismar Heiser, I think Dr. Anderson, other board members, what are the best practices? Zeroing in even more micro on the specific practices in the building with that equitable staffing, and what's driving above and beyond performance? And is that being done well? We've got good coaches, are coaches coaching the same best instructional practices in our AAP centers and our local Level Four? Those are those other pieces. And again, honestly, have been part of the strategic plan, as Ms. Darnat-Kofax said, that has been a good one, that the board has been using to continue to do the strategic plan goals that we've had. So I don't think we answered every single thing in here, maybe when it gets to the best practices, but I do think we decisively answered about our funding level and the equity in how we're doing our funding. And that's important, I think, for our community right now, as we're, we're, we're coming out of this pandemic, and we are coming out of it step by step. And I'm sure ERS is willing to, you know, listen to the board feedback and consider, and we can consider doing some additional analysis beyond this, if that's what the board would like to do.
Thank you. And I'm glad to follow Dr. Braybran, because I think that time is of the essence, folks. This is the first step in a process that really, we started talking about many years ago, about the strategic alignment of our resources with our strategic plan. And this is the first time that I've seen any real level of engagement on that, and I think that there needs to be more, including if at all possible for you all to take a look at the special education staffing in our buildings and also in all those centers that we have, because we know that we have done yeoman's work over the past several years on redesigning our discipline process so that we keep our kids in our base schools. But we have buildings throughout the county for alternative schools, and we have buildings across the county for, that are serving our students with IEPs and 504s, and I think we need to bring them into this discussion. Secondly, you talk about the three-year, less than three-years experience for the average teacher in our higher-need schools. I would like to better understand what is the level of expertise on the principals in each of those schools, because many of the, the schools in Region Three, I share with Ms. Darnat-Kofax, and we've seen significant turnover. So if you can answer that, I have some other questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, and there's absolutely, nationally, a connection between principal turnover and, and teacher turnover. I don't have that data handy right now, but I know we do have it in our files and analysis. We'll be happy to circle back with that. I apologize, it's not ready today.
I think that'll be critical, because it is something that we've struggled with a bit. Additionally, do you have any data on the benefit of resource teachers versus the use of instructional coaches?
And are you describing resource teachers in terms of like, providing more instructional specialization?
For example, a math resource teacher, or a literacy resource teacher, or an advanced academic resource teacher.
So there's not a straightforward answer to that, because there's going to be a bunch of factors at play there. So like, I, so first of all, thank you for clarifying, you didn't mean special education resource, you were talking about math or, or reading. There's arguments for both, and it will vary, right? So, you know, it's going to depend on, well, what is that resource teacher doing with which kids at which time, and also what's the general experience or the effectiveness of the, of the gen ed teacher, the classroom teacher, and providing tier-one instruction in general? So there's going to be a bunch of factors that play in there. I think ideally, some of those decisions are made based on the experience of what's actually happening in each classroom, and what the, the teacher needs in order, and students need in order to be successful. Both are powerful strategies if done well. If I could, by the way, I wanted to circle back to your last question, because my team has been in touch and reminded me. So we actually have data on years in district for principals, we don't have data on full years of experience, and that's a common factor for staff positions in districts around the country. And so our view of principal experience in this district might be a little bit skewed low, because presumably there are so many principals who are being hired in from elsewhere. So we can certainly circle back with that, but that would be my caveat on the data.
That would be helpful, because also we grow a lot of our principals, so they may have years in district but have very few years in the principal role. So it would be helpful to better understand that. Additionally, when you first put forth the, the chart early on, you had a little gray box off, you had the staffing in buildings, and then you had the the gray chart, little tiny gray box, which was people located in gatehouse, or our regional assistant superintendent's offices, or the OSS organization. And do you, have you done any benchmarking on what we're doing in those areas versus the rest of their peer groups?
Yeah, we have not. There is a level of analysis that we have done in many districts, where we look at what we call leadership and management as a proportion of total dollar investment, and have those benchmarks, but that's not an area we focused on in this study.
Sharing those benchmarks would be helpful, because we get asked those questions a lot. I would share with my colleagues that we cannot wait to look at redesign of our school system in light of the sunset for ESER funds that we have used to invest so much, and to really make that a positive and fruitful investment. I think that we need to be working with, you know, maybe your organization or another organization to really start having that discussion on what do we look like post-2025?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, and then we'll go to go-backs. I appreciate your comment on what does 2025 look like. Had a number of conversations with the board members about that, so I look forward to continuing that. Two of the things that really stuck out to me, you know, that you mentioned, where we're very different. We have a high use of instructional coaches, and then we have this director of student services position that is different from other school districts. I was just wondering if we've already done any analysis. I mean, that might be a question for Dr. Presidio, if we've done any look at the success of our use of instructional coaches, or that DSS position.
You know, I'm trying to think back. We'd probably need to check with ORSE to see. I think we might have done something on instructional coaches a long time ago. I don't recall anything at all on DSSs, though.
Okay. I think that would be, that might be interesting, just that gets back to the, like, how well question that we keep talking about. I also just want to, one of the things I liked about the report is preparing for this portion of the meeting, and then, of course, preparing for the budget portion of the meeting, you know, and this is why, I guess, we're scheduled this way. It leads right into it, you know, we, some, you know, identifying here, for example, a shortage of, or, you know, less staffing in clerical support in middle schools. Well, that's something we've got in our budget, you know, proposal. And in addition, you know, we are going to be having some conversations around things like planning time, and how important that is. And I know in many conversations that I've had recently with our facilities and maintenance staff, around how do we meet some of our strategic goals in, you know, the environment, what are those mid-level positions, and why are we heavy in mid-level positions in facilities and maintenance, and how do we fill in underneath those people? So, I have found this data, you know, particularly helpful in thinking of that broad picture of where are we headed even in the short term with the budget that we're looking at here today. So just wanted to make that comment. With that, I think we're ready to go into go-backs. We are, of course, running behind, so we're hoping that we could give each person maybe a minute and a half for go-backs, so that we can finish this portion relatively quickly. So, the first person I have on the list is Ms. Cohen, followed by Dr. Anderson.
I'll gladly take the 13 minutes that was up there. 30 is also fine. All right. A couple of quick things. One, I would just be interested, and I bang for buck, I understand, but as somebody who represents, like, Ms. McLaughlin, two secondary schools of the three that we have in the county, that would be really interesting to me to be able to take a dive into, is what does staffing look like that makes those schools separate and distinct? Another piece for me is just, and I think just kind of diving into what Ms. Seismarheiser said, I think those numbers are skewed is all that we mean about the student-teacher ratio, because high school throws off your, you have your small group classes where you didn't necessarily qualify those as sped teachers to take them out of the equation, but they did go into the formula, because those teachers teach things other than the, so that was the only, I think, you know, one piece of that for us. The last is just more to Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Smith, and Dr. Presidio, and everybody FCPS here, is, to me, this is great, but the question becomes, what is on their plate? How are they being used? And what are some of the ways that the systems who are closing the gaps better using? If now we can get out of this conversation of keep adding staff, adding staff, adding staff, that's great from a budget perspective. Ms. Burden will sing and dance. But then, what are we doing with them? And how can we be helpful in that?
I wasn't sure there was a question to answer. I will, I will, I will plus one your point, and at risk of being a broken record, the questions about both volume of resources and use of resources are factors with resources that have a direct impact on student experiences and student outcomes. And I would reiterate that based on the bit of work we've done and the angle that we've had, it would, I would be sure, I would not be surprised at all to know that there are probably some really interesting and significant bright spots and examples within the county that are always the best place to start when trying to scale great strategies, focusing first on what works here.
I agree with you, and I think just a comprehensive, and I don't know how we do it in the middle of all this, I totally get it, but having conversations with principals about what, what are the people in their schools, what are they doing, what is on their plate? Where, some people are doing five people's jobs. If it's not more staff, then how do we redistribute what's being done? Or, how do we take some stuff off the plate, which I think is the conversation with ESER, of like, being strategic and maybe being able to let go of some of the things that are just Fairfax County add-ons?
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. I'm kind of stuck on pages 15 and 16 of your data. I just wanted to ask, I noticed on page 15, it says the FRM for Fairfax is 30%, and on page 16, it's 31%. I know that's not a huge difference, but can you explain the difference, since this data's two years old?
Yep. On, on page 15, I think we have simply rounded to be comparable to the categories, or I wouldn't read into it.
Okay. Thank you. My other question on this page is, you mentioned that these districts are anonymous. Is there a reason? Because I imagine this data is public. It's just a matter of collating it.
Well, the data is actually, is not public. It's off of internal, as it is with your internal financial and HR files that we process and merge together in order to make the comparison. So the, the data on page 15 is public. It's NCES data. Everything underneath it, in terms of how they staff and what their staffing levels are, is based on analysis of their financial and personnel files. That's not public. And so, that was sort of one of the, one of the commitments that we made in trying to bring more folks into, into this, because we imposed work on those district teams at a time when they don't have a lot of extra bandwidth. So that was the trade-off.
Thank you. One of the things that you mentioned just a little while ago is how mobility was utilized as a factor in some places. How is that quantified? Can you give me a sense, if you know it?
Yeah, it's a great question. I don't know exactly, like, the administrative approach. I do know it is rare to feel like you have a good sense of that data, and it probably requires some collaboration across entities within, within the county to do so. When you do have the data, it's super powerful to see, right? You don't have any low-poverty schools with high mobility, but you have some high-poverty schools with high mobility and some with low mobility, and that really is an interesting differentiator.
Yeah, I would love to dig into that further, because we know it impacts the challenges that schools face. And I do want to thank you, Ms. Omeish, for bringing this up, to really highlight that Title I funds, which do contribute to the lower class sizes in most of our schools, it's not supposed to be, it's not funds that's supposed to be utilized for main operational purposes. It is a supplement. So I would love to get a sense of, if we were to remove those Title I dollars, what would our picture look like for our high-poverty schools?
One other thing, Dr. Anderson, we'll pull back, and Marty, I think we can find it. The prior board did do a follow-on around mobility, and I know we have that.
You're going to get another one.
Well, we can maybe pull that one and look. And I believe, as I recall, we made some budget adjustments based on that to a couple of our elementary schools. For example, for Belvoir, upper and lower, that had, I think, the highest mobility in the entire school system, even though their FRM wasn't there. And so we did some adjustments. So we can go back and look. We'll pull that and then share it with the board. If there's additional work that needs to be done, we can talk about that.
Thank you. The other thing that I want to highlight is to differentiate between schools. Most of the data that you provided regarding poverty spoke to below 25%, 25% to 50%, and above 50%. I would love to get a sense of what are our schools experiencing for those who are above 70%, because that's a very different experience than 50% or even 90%, because those are some of the schools that I represent. So I'd like to get a sense of that information, too, when it comes to student achievement, as you provided in the first few slides. I think it was just the English data, performance data that you provided.
Dr. Anderson, one more thing on that, not to feel like I'm playing a history teacher now, which I was. This was something that Dr. Doran looked at, and it's why with the prior board, we did suggest a higher cutoff for Title I schools, because we did a peer comparison. Our Title I numbers were starting to kick in funding formula at 35, I want to say, percent, maybe 34. And what this research was showing, what national best practice was, is divisions were concentrating at the number you just said, 70% was theirs. We migrated up, I want to say, into the 50.
We're 55, right?
Is it 55? Okay. So, we actually did do some of that equity work with the prior board, and this is that continuous improvement going, because we did, you know, you're talking about, because it's a great question, without the Title I, we realized we needed to really, if we were looking at best practices and allocation, we needed to concentrate Title I dollars more carefully in that 55 and over.
No, I appreciate that, but also, there's a concern that if you are, if more than half of your school is high poverty, and there's no support for that, that's really a hard thing to deal with, because of the challenges that are presented. So there's got to be something that is provided for those schools that are 40 and above, because I think some of the research says, by at 40%, that's where things start to.
Right. And, and, and again, I'm only doing this so that people see in the community in particular, this board and prior boards have been looking at this through that equity lens. The other thing that we have done, and goes all the way back, frankly, 15 years, we have FRM formulas that provide additional staffing at the tune of, and Ms. Burden, you can, what, I don't know the number today, 30, $40 million of additional money that's FRM provided, separate from Title I. That's our FRM formulas. There was some time back in the Great Recession about cutting, about cutting that. That would have been a strong walk away from equity. And we know that that's important, and that's something we can continue to talk about and look at with you all.
Thank you. I know my time is up, but I would be very interested in digging into, how do we present the most qualified and experienced teachers who will have the most impact in front of our highest need students? So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burden, did you want to add anything there? Okay.
No.
Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you. I want to go back to what Ms. Bukarski was saying, and Ms. Cohen as well, and just dig into this a little bit more. And it's not necessarily for you all, but just to put that to my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand. I do think we need to look really importantly, really deeply into, what is the FCPS way, and what are our expectations on our teachers and principals in understanding our staffing, right? Like, this, I think this is great information in terms of our bodies, and how you, how many bodies we have per pupil, in terms of teachers, in terms of principals. But if, we need to look at the job requirements and the job expectations to fully understand our staffing in comparison, right? It's hard to know, if we don't know what our teachers are expected to do in comparison to what one of these other school systems teachers are expected to do, it's hard to, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And they may have more expectations in doing so with less than we are. I don't know. We may have more in doing so with more. I don't know. But I think that's a really important next step conversation, at least, before we can, I think, really utilize the results of the study in a way that helps our decision-making. So, that's not on you all necessarily, but I just wanted to put that. And I think that's what Ms. Bukarski was getting at as well. The other question I have is, again, when we're looking at the special education, and I'm sorry to keep digging into this, but I'm trying to understand, when you're looking at those staffing ratios, if you have a special education student within a general education class, where they may go anywhere from a little bit of pullout to only there for morning meeting, how do you determine that staffing for that special ed teacher? How do those realities play into your staffing numbers, right? Because they're not always neatly self-contained or not self-contained.
That's exactly right. So what I think we can do is document the methodology that we use to identify the students and staff that are included, to clarify that.
And did you just, did you look into the job requirements when you did this?
The job requirements for?
For our staff in comparison to other staff in other districts when comparing the staffing numbers.
Only to make an understanding of what the role was, so we were making proper comparisons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Omeish?
Thank you. Kind of building back off of something that's been said a lot, do you think it is possible to revisit and look at some of these things against, not just, again, regional comparison and SOQs, but best practices, especially for some of these, you know, professions that we have that are not necessarily universal, like the specialists or, you know, various, you've pointed out, staff that we have that others might not?
And when you're describing best practice, you mean just in terms of the number of resources, the number of staff?
Right, yeah. I mean, because used is another conversation, right?
Yeah. So, the way we go at that is the methodology we used here, where we look at similar districts that are more similar than some other districts around the country, right? You won't see, you won't see New Haven, Connecticut in here, much smaller. And use that data to try to make meaning of what is happening here. There is academic research available on sort of what does it take? But again, I think the vast majority of that has led us down the path of, once you get to a certain level, the how-well questions, the what's actually happening, as you were alluding to, are the key questions. And so, so I would, I would, I would continue to encourage the questions about, like, reflections on what, what we are, how the resources that are available are being supported to provide the right, the best possible support education for kids, more so than being able to say there's a best practice number for any of these positions, because there is so much variation in what can happen in a school with the exact same numbers, and even the exact same people.
But I guess, how do we bridge the gap between knowing that there are staff that are way below number, right? Like, I mentioned the example of psychologists is just one, but, and what we're hearing? Because at some point, I'm just looking at this and thinking, a multi-year plan, achieve the best practice ratios, prioritize with an equity focus? I'm not sure that we're at a place where the board, you know, has what we need to move forward with that.
Yeah. So I would say, the data tells us that, from the best comparisons we can make across the country, Fairfax County Public Schools is, and I'm sorry if I'm being a broken record, staffed at a higher level, and staffed with as much attention to, if not in the elementary school level, greater attention to equity based on free reduced lunch or economic poverty, is the metric, of any of the districts that we have looked at that are large countywide districts. I think that's as far as we can go. I do think that's a really nice foundation for thinking about what does a multi-year resource plan look like, that I know has been foundational to the work already happening in the district. But I think, you know, you're, you make a great point, that, you know, two schools with the same staffing level could have very different experiences for their kids. And so, anchoring on, like, anchoring on the exactly who's there and how much is an important question, but as you point out, it is one of the questions.
So that's one dimension. Maybe what I'm trying to get at is, from a student needs perspective, right? How many psychologists does a school, an average school, need to be staffed with, for them to actually be able to provide, let's say, a counseling service, rather than just being a checkbox, IEP review kind of service, right? That's what I'm trying to get at. Like, can we come Like, can we come up with recommendations that, that might help us think, okay, we're doing okay on the social worker front, but on this front, we're really, we're really short of quality, not SOQs, but our, our estimation of that.
Yeah, so I know I'm gonna, I'm giving you somewhat unsatisfying answers, but, but let me choose a couple of examples, right? So is the psychologist being, being used to do the IEP administration, right? It's an issue you raised. Okay. Well, there's a bunch of factors that go into that. One is who else should be, could be doing IEP administration and should be. Another factor is, what are the, the diagnostic approaches into multi-tiered systems of supports that we might put in place to understand when a child really would benefit from direct service from a psychologist? What is happening within the classroom that is allowing teachers and other staff to be able to, to navigate issues that might, could be addressed early? So, so it's an unsatisfying answer because it's nonlinear, but I think those factors end up playing a bunch into the same outcome you're describing, which is, yeah, it's probably reasonable that somebody who's a psychologist in a school and has the skills to do that job well and support students, the, the way you described them using their time probably isn't optimal. I'd be surprised if actually that's happening a lot, but that's a fascinating question. Yep.
So Ms. Omeish, one thing in the budget, and this is something Ms. Tolan was saying earlier, trying, even though I had no idea what they'd say four or five months, but trying in a budget process. Clerical is behind in middle school. I have clerical in the budget for middle school. This issue about the use of our folks, that's one of the reasons in the budget I have the special education lead teacher department chair at the elementary school, so that folks like the psychologists can get back to direct student services and not having to sit and lead in IEP team meetings again and again and again. So there are things we're trying to do to align the position and the duties with the actual reality or where it's not matching up. Like, you're supposed to be doing this, but you're busy doing those other things. I hope that helps some, it's probably not completely.
It's just an example, I know my time, but ESOL is like one to 40-some, right? Like, that's another example, but, sorry? No, he did, he did.
Right. And remember ESOL, we have a three-year plan, I think part of your leadership, and we have a three-year plan we're finishing. The nugget I want to leave everybody with, this board and the prior board have been doing strategic equity work on a number of fronts, and today was validation from an outside person to say, and they could have said something different, the data could have said, you're off. We're on track and we're on an equity track. What we still need to do better is something this board has said, and I admit it, fidelity of implementation with the resources you have. But we have been strategic in our budget with the plan developed by Dr. Carzo, refined by me with the both, both boards, to continue to move with an equity lens. It's taking the deeper dive in the day-to-day operational fidelity of implementation that frankly, has been a little bit, if I want to say the word, paused in the middle of the pandemic, when people were just trying to survive and were really coming out of the pandemic, returning to that principle, where's your time? Not doing pandemic emergency operations, but doing instructional leadership by visiting classrooms. I'm really hopeful the second semester, as we pivot, as we begin to monitor those COVID cases going down and create off-ramps for our community on a number of issues, that our principals will stop having to be COVID mitigation leaders and can go back to being the instructional leaders and do that dip-sticking in the classrooms with their personnel. What is my psychologist doing? Are they doing it well? And providing that kind of instructional feedback, evaluation feedback, that's really been hard to juggle with everything else when we've been in the pandemic sort of emergency operations mode.
Thank you. I have two board members who are meeting for go-bags, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Marin.
So I'd like to go to slide 19, since we were just talking about middle schools and clerical staff. You know, the consultants you talked about and someone asked if the comparator districts, one through five, if they were six through eight, or if they were seven, eight? What was, what was the answer again? Do we know?
Yeah, mostly six, eight, but we can certainly go back and, and tell you the exact breakdown.
And, and help me if I'm not understanding this correctly, but I think that's extremely important before things like our superintendent saying that we have to suddenly invest in clerical staff at the middle school level, because if they are six, eight, and we're predominantly seven, eight, then we staff clerical based on the number of students in the school building. So I think that chart gives me a lot of pause. And, and so my second question would be, all of this data that your team assembled, do we have through this contract access to receive all of the raw data behind these charts?
The raw data from Fairfax County?
No, I mean for the, the five comparator districts.
No, every comparison district, including Fairfax County, is going to get the processed output in an Excel form as well as in the PowerPoint and the summary.
Yeah, where I'm trying to go with this is trying to understand these numbers, where if I'm actually seeing the comparator districts for how you can tell us in this chart that under clerical staff, middle school, we're at 2.0 deficit, I, I want to actually see, see those numbers, like what are the clerical numbers per building for each one of their middle schools than to each one of our middle schools? Because, you know, again, I, I've got concerns that you're reporting to us something that's now giving the superintendent and many board members the thinking that we have to now take what little dollars we have with high-class sizes and all the other challenges, and we'd maybe be putting that in middle school clerical staff. And I don't think the analysis on its face proves that. So that worries me.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Sure, I would, just to share a few, a few points in response. One is, we are not sharing with the comparison districts that level of data on Fairfax County, nor are we sharing with Fairfax County that level of data from the comparison districts. It's basically, that's virtually the raw data from the, from the files, and every district keeps that confidential. We sign data-sharing agreements with each district that we work with to be sure that we're being, protecting the data. So what, what everybody will get is the, is the, the summary data analysis that shows us what you have in each district. We'll get the granular data about themselves so they can cut it in different ways that they want to.
Well, I, I know that anybody who wants to know our staffing at every single one of our middle schools, that's public. They want to know how many clerical staff positions we have at Frost Middle School, they can go find that, that's public. So I'm not quite sure, maybe I can talk offline with our staff and your team, because I don't understand how this is so secretive.
I think the volume of work required to go from what are typically public files in any given district, and I can't speak to the other five district leadership and how they feel about it, to something that is actually comparable across is the work we have done, not something that one could, could replicate on the fly. So I think that's, that's an important consideration. I wanted to just come back to your point about the, the way the numbers were calculated and how to make meaning of them. So the average middle school size, and this is in the appendix on page 57, the average middle school size in Fairfax County is 1,175 students. The average middle school size in four of the other districts ranges from 824 to 1,169. All of those are scaled. One district has an average of 494, which is a little bit subscale. This is why we are looking at all data on a per-thousand-student basis. So it shouldn't matter whether we have more students or fewer students, it shouldn't matter whether we have two grades or three grades, right? If you have 800 students or 1,000 students in a school, that's the method that we're using to make the comparisons. The last thing I would say is just in the interpretation of the data, I would not use the term surplus or deficit to describe anything that we have shared here. And what we are saying is compared to what we see, compared to what we see in the five comparison districts about how they staff any position, including clerical staff, at each level, on a per-thousand-pupil basis, we can tell you where Fairfax County is relative to those five peers in the median, and in some cases it's above and in some cases it's below. How you use that information to decide, is this the way we want to go? That's work that Dr. Braybrand and his team have been engaging in in response to way, this is, I think, one, one small piece of the data that this team incorporates in, in making proposals and decisions. So I would just be really careful, as it was earlier, about the language we used about, is there a deficit of staffing in someplace? That is not the message we are delivering. We are, we are showing you what the comparison is, as we were asked to in the initial scope.
And I think that for us as staff, it's important then to look at these data sets,
and as the board to say, are we getting the outcomes that we are looking for, for this group of employees, for these groups of students, and to use this data to, to make some of those decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Marin?
Yeah, my question is about ESAR funding. So Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington, I did want to ask you about this. So I've heard from some principals that they would like more flexibility when it comes to staffing, to be able to hire people and not buy things. And I just sat in a meeting last week with an elementary school where these amazing teachers were trying to do this mental gymnastics work. And I know, Ms. Burden, you've cautioned against us funding extra staff, and then there will be this cliff, and we won't be able to keep people on. I counter that we are in a hiring crisis and people seem to be very mobile, and so can we get people in immediately? And, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out with some, you know, calculated risks. My question for you, Ms. Burden, is what, how can ESAR be more flexible to allow for more staffing flexibility? And then for our consultant, I wanted to know, I see that you have some resources about ESAR trends and equity at the end of your presentation, so I wonder what your thoughts are on that, given what you're seeing, please? Thank you.
You know, I, I remain concerned over us using ESAR funds for recurring positions and that creating an unsustainable cliff in future years. I, I think that that is not the right thing to do, that we should use those funds for hourly assistance, whether it be external or internal or outside the contract. You know, we have, in the current year budget, we have as a required adjustment, I think, $17 million worth of positions that we funded with ESAR II or ESAR III, and we think they're worthwhile to continue in the fiscal '23 budget. But, but that's at a pretty big cost. I mean, $16 million that, you know, we decided that we wanted to include those permanently, but that's going to require local dollars or state dollars to do that. So I, I'm not convinced yet. I understand the need, but I'm not convinced that, that we should spend millions of dollars on staffing that we might not be able to sustain into the future.
Just before Mr. Rosenberg speaks, I just want to also add that there are not a lot of people out there who want to work for hourly and contracted wages. We know that in lots of industries. So that's also adding that extra layer of urgency. Thank you.
And I can add that as we look at the appropriated dollars that are, that each of our principals receive, that our principals have that flexibility to use those appropriated dollars to make those best instructional decisions for their schools. And so as we think about how ESAR dollars are used to support needs of students, certainly, and I would readily engage with any of our principals who have questions about how to, to make better decisions about how to use those appropriated funds, to help them as they're making those decisions for their schools.
I think the only thing I would add is that there is a big difference between what ESAR allows and what is actually a sustainable path for any school division team to take on. ESAR is pretty flexible in what districts can do, but I think Ms. Burden makes a huge point that all of our CFO partners are wrestling with from the moment this started, which is, if you bake in structural costs now, you will be paying them later, and that will constrain your flexibility to do other things that you want to do for kids down the road. So it's a very, it's a tough spot to be in, for sure.
Well, thank you, and I will have to go back and read your materials more closely, but I mean, I have the solution, it's just fully funded education, right? I mean, just keep the funding level where it's at.
And with that closing remark, with that closing remark, I would like to thank you for spending time with us here today and giving us a more full picture of what your research is about and, you know, what it contains. Appreciate that and appreciate our staff working with you. I think at this point, since we are behind, what we will do is go ahead with our lunch break and then have Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington present the budget right after lunch, and then we'll go into comments on our proposed budget.